Chief Dave Bush.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the second regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Boston Spa on September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the September twelfth, two thousand and twenty three meeting be approved? Trustee Fundesa. Trustee Baskin, leave that puppy on tonight. I think all your microphones, because it's going to be just the three of us here. All in favor, discussion, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, it is passed. Excuse me. Mayor's announcements. Nothing pressing actually this week to announce. We'll go straight to liaison reports, Ben.
All right, just reading from some emails and things. So the Boston area senior center is having their official meeting. They're having a business meeting this Thursday, September twenty nine, thirty AM to noon. And there is a potluck and they're ordering pies and things like that. But anyway, just let you know, they're going about their business. And there's a business meeting this week. And the Park and Tree Board, they submitted their recommendations regarding the ASC birdhouse contract. And they are talking with the SBPA about what to do about a little plot by on Front Street and also starting to think about budgeting for next year. Part of that conversation is how to coordinate watering among all the different plots, including Whiz Wall and other places that need watering and trying to come up with a budget for that. Also, the tree grant, if additional trees are planted, that might need watering. So anyways, that's part of the conversation they're having now. And what else did they talk about? They're getting back to Carl was with, they're looking over the draft Parks Law and for comments and they're getting back to you or we'll get back to you on that. And as part of what they're looking at is suggestions on what could go on the signs themselves for the parks. They're going to look at other parks and see, you know, of all the laws, which ones do we want on the park signs? And their next meeting is October seventeenth. I think that's most of it for them. For the Arts Committee, I heard that you can jump in on any of this. They are, I'll just say again, they're having the Sounds in Winter two concerts, one November eighteenth and one December thirtieth, both at three PM. There had November's James Street String Quartet and December thirtieth is a violin and piano trio. And then they are also planning for the coming year and different projects that they hope to pursue. They're wondering if they can do any kind of decoration on the new CDTA shelter. So I don't, they're going to do some research on that. I don't know if that's possible. But just basically art, wherever art can be put. And the, so early November, the first week of November, they are hoping for applications to Saratoga Arts. All right, go ahead.
So appreciate what the Arts Committee did. When we learned last year that Saratoga Arts would allow us as the village to act as a fiscal, thank you, fiscal sponsor, which just means that the village will act as a pass through for any applicant that Arts Committee works with and that we eventually approve to be one of our applicants for that. They backed out of schedule based off all, all applications to Saratoga Arts are due at the end of November on the twenty eighth. But they asked us to just make sure that things get approved in time from the village board. And we discussed and I thought if they get it to us by November sixth, it'll get for on the agenda for our first meeting. So they're really working really hard to try to get it a more standard sort of process and get it to us as soon as possible. So they're working hard on that. And that's been says that they're working on a number of ideas for art in public spaces. So.
And thank you. And their next meeting is October fourth. Then also, just in case you're wondering what's going on, September thirtieth, the, there's an Eagle Scout and Lions Club are fixing the stage of Old Iron Spring Park. And they're also going to be adding some garbage cans as another Eagle Scout project somewhere around Columbus Day. And again, our committee is thinking about, oh, can we put, what can we put on garbage cans? And BSPPA is also talking to the Arts Committee about putting art on the panels of the garbage cans that aren't being sponsored, as well as some other things to do at Farmer's Market.
Thank you, Ben. Trustee Fundesa, any other reports you'd like to add?
Uh, yes. Got a nice email from Ellie Dillon. She asked if I can tack this on to the BSPPA report. They are going to be, the Bottle Museum will be having a ribbon cutting on October sixth at four thirty. They are going to be exhibiting a glass factory mountain, making bottles, making history. The exhibit will reflect rich history of bottles and mineral water in Saratoga County. Following the ribbon cutting, there'll be refreshments and a guided tour of the exhibit. There will also be a lecture on, this is a funny title, Queens of Quackery, Women in Patent Medicines, October seventh at five PM. So they're, they're trying to promote what they're doing at their museum.
Queens of quackery?
Literally queens of quackery. So not just snake oil salesmen, you know, women too. So, but Ellie said that they'll be reaching out to our entire board for invitations to make sure all of us know that we're welcome to attend. The public is welcome to attend as well. Checked in with Dana, mainly she just wants us to know they're working really hard on finalizing car show, which is surprisingly coming up soon. It came really quick, in my opinion. That's October eighth. If there's people that want to volunteer, you're welcome to just email Dana at Dana at Boston.org. That's the short of it for now.
Very good. Thank you. Treasurer's report, Treasurer was on vacation last week and much deserved one. And she just got back late today. So I know official treasurer's report, I will tell you that. They are prepping for re-levees coming up very soon. I also know that the state announced that sales tax statewide went up four percent last month, but the county went up ten percent according to that report from Controller Denoply's office. So another banner month for Saratoga County and that obviously reflects well for us when we get our payment from the county. So that's good news. And otherwise, just getting little drips and drabs of water and taxes that haven't been paid on time. And that's about it going on right now. Also, I should say the AOD is getting actively worked on for fiscal year twenty three, working with Bob Fox on that. We've got a litany of emails we've got to parse through to get him the information. He needs to complete that over the next month. Okay, we have a presentation from Chief David Bush of the Boston Spa Police Department. And Chief Bush, if you'd like to come forward, you got a good spot for you right over there? Please don't trip. It's very Dick Van Dyke kind of move there. Wait till you join public on Zoom land too. Make sure they know you. Happy to see you. They can't see you from that angle. Don't worry.
Are you done?
I am so done.
Okay, thank you. My name is Dave Bush. I'm the chief of police for your police department. Just to give you a little overview of what the departments are doing lately and how we're covering, how we're managing. The first thing I'd like to touch on is I just received word this week, actually last week, but confirmed today. The Department of Criminal Justice Services grant of nine thousand eight hundred and eight dollars for our narcotics investigation has been approved. And we'll be receiving that shortly. So that's really good news for us and really good news to be able to go ahead and repay you folks for your kindness, your last day in there.
Make sure my mic is a little closer to everyone. Make sure you're out there.
Perfect. In that vein, I'm not going to talk a lot about our investigation with the narcotics unit. The, I want my officer safe and unless we talk about that, that ever the better. So we'll go on to something that's kind of relevant to that is the, we continue to provide the Narcan training for the community. Anybody who wants it, we'll give it. We occasionally work with the Central Department of Health and the Central County Sheriff's Office to have some Narcan training at a specific site and specific date, but at any point in time that anybody needs Narcan or wants Narcan, give me a call. I'll bring it to you. I'll teach you how to use it. Nobody will know you have it. Nobody will care. So that's available to, to our public. Couple of months ago or a few months ago, the mayor had advised all that we were going to supply an officer to concentrate on traffic issues. We did that. We're doing it two days a week. We're varying the times, we're varying the days. And as a result of that, this one officer, who's Officer Ed Atley, has investigated six car crashes. He's issued one hundred and fifty-five citations, seventeen criminal arrests or vehicle or traffic law arrests, that could be operated without a license, suspended registration and penal law arrests as well. Revacation suspensions, thirteen, five DWIs from just one guy. Issued warnings, three hundred and twenty-one. What's kind of interesting about that number is three hundred and twenty-one probably represents three hundred and nineteen village residents. And that's why we look at. Narcotics intervention, five. And here's a really, really important one. While he was on duty doing his traffic detail, he had three Narcan reversals. Three. That's crazy. Three are, what's that? What, two in a car and one outside the car? That's, that's insane. And that just goes to point out the need for our extra unit that we're using right here.
And for those that aren't aware, Chief, Ed Atley is going to be starting as a full-time police officer effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four. We value what he's done for this community a short period of time greatly. And that's why we approved that a couple of meetings ago to make sure that he stays with us and becomes very, very familiar with our community and to our residents. So thanks to Ed for wanting to be part of our team permanently like that.
No, I agree. Those who don't know, Ed Atley, Ed Atley is a retired Marine First Sergeant combat experience. And we owe it to him. We owe it to the village to keep somebody like him. Besides, I told him if he left, I'd hunt him down. Which brings us to staffing. Currently, we're running at fifteen part-time patrolmen and four full-time patrolmen as of January and become full-time. But then we're looking very shortly after that of losing Todd Ives. So. But within the past week, actually the week of the eleventh, we conducted firearms training for the department. We're required to train in firearms twice a year. So this was our summer issue of training. We went through two thousand five hundred forty cal rounds. That's a lot. Two hundred and five rounds of five point five six ammo and one hundred and five rounds of twelve gauge shotgun. The guys did amazing. They did amazing. But you have to remember about the guys that we have here in our department, they're all veterans. They've all either worked for other departments for many, many years and they worked for us part-time as a part-time gig. Or the, actually the four full-time guys that we have right now are very, well, very experienced. They, they served in other departments and they have a lot of experience on the development. We are very lucky with the staff that we have right now. Last weekend, as a matter of fact, Saturday, they went to provide police services for the Taste of Toga. We had one major incident or wasn't major, it was major minor, maybe. Somebody was assaulted. They had their nose hit. But that was it. We provided services for over three thousand people that were there at that event. They were expecting eight thousand.
Up to, yep.
Yep. So we were lucky, very lucky. We provided then with four and a half officers and they are reimbursed us for their, their time. We we're dealing with Saratoga Springs Police Department as well as trying to get other police departments in the county on board to establish some type of communication system in the event that we have another incident like we had in the province. One of the problems that arose out of that is that information was retrieved, but it was never passed along to the other police departments. So we're coming up with ways that we can make sure that every police department in this county knows about it and can prepare for it. We were totally unprepared. We had no idea, but we could have. And that's a problem. And that's a problem that's been recognized. And lastly, you know, there's talk about the prospect that the police department moved to another building. That would be absolutely amazing for my guys. It would no doubt bring them an extra bit of pride. You've all seen our building, I'm sure. And it's really, it's sad. It's sad. My guys do a really good job, a really good job. And I think that this will just display or put on display the, the type of building that this police department deserves. It's been a lot of time coming. We're grateful. We're going to do our job wherever we are. Put us out of a tent and we'll do our job. That, that's what we do. But the appreciation that you folks have shown to at least explore the option of letting us or possibly letting us move into a new building is greatly appreciated.
And for those that don't know in that, we had voted a few meetings ago on moving forward with the transaction for the emergency building when they move early next year to purchase that building, meeting with USDA tomorrow to walk through it and talk about getting low interest loan possibility from USDA. Chief, could you speak to the setup of that building? How much would need to be done in your mind to get that, let's say, ready for prime time for the police department ultimately?
I don't think very much at all, to be honest with you. I know you and I have spoken as that privately. I'm, I'm a lot lower than, than you are, I believe. The spaces that we're going to need are already there, just have to modify them a little bit. That's it. An extra door here for the extra secure lock. You have to remember that if we were to move the police department, we're moving twenty to thirty years worth of evidence. That has to be stored and locked and secured as we have the video on it. We're moving probably sixty thousand rounds of ammunition, which is required for us to keep on hand. And plus, you know, all the other stuff. So, yeah, I don't think as much as, as other people are probably anticipating, Mayor.
So you're, you're speaking to a guy that unfortunately, as he's, the cost of everything going up lately on the building development side of things. So I'm hoping you're right and I'm wrong on this one because it'll be benefit to the village. But I, I think it's definitely south of six figures, no matter what we're talking about here in terms of the renovation. So all in all, for what we need and what we can provide to the police department, this is a win-win ultimately. So I'm glad everyone moved forward, just finishing up the contract work on that. But we do have a binding letter of intent that was signed and deposit down. So we are moving forward with that. So keep your fingers crossed that no, no glitches on that.
The only thing I require is a sign upfront that says that, that is the police department and we can start helping people.
We will definitely invest in that. I can assure you on that one. Anybody on the board have any questions for Chief Bush?
Thank you.
Just a comment. No, I actually just have a really, a comment that I would, I would like for you to share with your officers. I, I, big surprise, I don't have a lot of police interaction, which is a good thing, but beside you giving me a look. But one of the things since coming on board to the Board of Trustees, I've actually had to work with and interact with your officers a lot for different incidences in the village. Somebody having a medical problem, someone having, you know, having an incident in the middle of the park, you know, in the middle of the, that was actually the farmer's market. But in each instance, the officer knew who that person was, handled it with like such compassion and grace. And I just have to commend your officers for that. I don't know if everybody knows the community policing that your guys do, but they do it. So thank you for that.
I want to commend Chief Bush. We usually kind of caucus together once to twice a week to talk about what's going on. And we'll talk, you know, via phone multiple times a week if necessary. He's always available, even though he's technically a part-time chief. You wouldn't be able to tell that from how he interacts and make sure that we have what we need and his officers have what they need at all times. So while he may be contemplating retirement at some point, he is definitely acting as if retirement is many years down the line, which I hope is true for our community's sake, because you are a true asset for our communities. Thank you for everything you do and your officers for that matter.
I also want to thank you for everything. You don't, you didn't bring what you like, statistics for the year. Those are very interesting.
They, they are interesting and I was going to like, very short notice to, to talk to folks that I, as we talked about in the past, that, that takes a very long time to do with the files.
So it's not something you just have, you keep track of?
I wish I could press a button and have it spit out, but no.
Can you just clarify, you're saying people can come in to get Narcan trained, like just individuals can come in or?
If somebody, listen, this is the, this is the, this is a family's dirty little secret. All right. And we, we tried to hide the fact or we're versed about the fact or we don't want anybody to know that, that, you know, there's a problem like that in my family or your family or if you're in that type of situation and you're scared and you want to be able to help your loved one, if in fact they were to overdose, come see me, call me, get in touch with me. I will meet you wherever. I will train you and I will give you as much Narcan as you want or need.
Then you don't take names?
No, no, no.
Christine, I know you had a quick question or something.
I just wanted to ask you, Chief Bush, thank you, as always, for your service. I just, I wanted to ask about the traffic. Are there particular areas? Those are amazing numbers. I mean frightening, but in any event, is there a particular area? I know there's been a lot done. I see your officers and I see around the school and there have been other things to mitigate the traffic at the multi avenue school. Are there particular areas of the village where it's, where it's really problematic?
All these incidents happen on Chatham Street. We, I, I receive and the mayor receives information from the phone saying, hey, we need, we need the traffic enforcement over here. We need it over here. When, when the mayor receives it, he gives it to me and I assign the guy to that particular spot. Or if I receive it, I, I make sure that he puts some time there concentrating on it. We've been all over the village. We, we separate it. We, we try to get as many people who, who have contacted us for enforcement on their street. We try to make sure that we pay them some attention. So it's been all over.
And Christine, just to further that point, between social media posts and comments, messenger messages to me, emails, phone calls, we, we get a litany of requests slash advice about where, you know, sort of purge ourselves for a little bit. And Chief and I talk frequently to make it a hotspot for the time being, to make sure we have a presence there because we kind of take it at face value when we're requested to make those moves by the village residents, that there must be a problem there. They're feeling the need or compelled to reach out to that group. So it is citizen, you know, involvement at its best, I think. And we appreciate that the residents are out there trying to make sure that the streets are safe for everybody. Right?
A question on Narcan training. What is, how long does it take to do the Narcan training?
I can complete a Narcan training in five minutes or less.
Okay.
Now, if I'm going to, if I'm going to do it with the video and I'm going to do it with the lesson plan and the student outline, we're talking about a good forty minutes.
Okay. In the, the short version, which is, is what most people would be. I do have some experience with Narcan, not personally, but in the use of. Is that something that we could do in a village meeting, if it's only a five or 10 minute period that we could, you know, maybe have another twenty people trained and given Narcan? Yeah, ten minutes. On that and some of the stuff we spend an hour.
No, that's a good point. I mean, here's the thing, I, I prefer that everybody walk in the street, have a Narcan on it or close by. The more Narcan have that we have, the more people that can be saved. You know, we often tend to fall in this, this, this mind trap of, they're an addict, they should help them. They got themselves into this. And you're right, to a certain extent. But it's somebody's son or daughter. It's somebody's mom or dad, somebody's grandson or granddaughter. They deserve to be saved. They deserve it. We don't treat people who smoke any differently. We still treat them. Give them oxygen. We treat them with drugs. We treat, you know, so it's a disease. If we can, if we can all walk around as first responders with a, with a Narcan in our pocket, may that be a great thing. That we, we would cut the overdose deaths by three quarters guaranteed. So yes.
There's something to consider. You know, I can say it'd be a good, good way to spend some time.
Chief, I don't see any other questions. Thank you very much for your service, sir. And we'll talk soon. I just want to make sure that you're not going to get clipped out of the shot. I'm just noticing if you want to come in just a little bit, just a nudge. Okay, old business. And since I just put you back into the shot, go ahead and start with your free pieces of old business and new business.
Sure. All right. So the, as you know, the Park and Tree Board just submitted their comments on the birdhouse contract. And I just wanted to get a sense of where we are as a group in terms of the process. As you know, I, they had concerns about the contract. I've shared concerns about the contract too. You know, when I say concerns, I mean, things that I'd like to change. I still want to move forward with the program, but things that I think need to be altered inside the contract. So I, I don't know how appropriate it is to talk about specific.
Not very, not very, because we're so in a mode of discussing terms of contract. I, I think the next step is to probably sit down with Mark Black and ASCC and look at the recommendations, see what are, you know, deal killers per se, what are, you know, things we can work on together to move forward with, figure out where we are and make a determination from there ultimately.
So he's been very anxious. I was going to get this off the ground. There's a lot of legwork involved. Should we have an executive session where we hash out what we need to do at that time?
Yeah, it wouldn't be.
So we, well, I guess I'm not sure. We can't talk about it in public and it's not executive session. I thought contracts were, they're not.
Only if there are Article fourteen labor law contracts.
So, so to talk about this, we have to do it in an email and that's it?
Well, you, you can talk about it. You got a representative or two representatives try to discuss it and come back to the board by email at that point to say, here's where we are, what, what was going on. So maybe the best way to do it is have a little bit of a caucus by email of, hey, this is important to me. This is important to me. Make sure of this. And then take all those thoughts, take the Park and Tree thoughts and then sit down and say, okay, where are we going with this, Mark? And go from there. That would be my recommendation.
All right. Yeah. Some of that has been submitted. All right. Yeah, some of that has been submitted, so I guess maybe if there's a timeline attached or, uh, or framework, um, just a sense of forward momentum somehow and movement would be helpful. Um, do you know if there's a, a timeline? I mean, obviously he wants it like yesterday.
I haven't seen any of the comments.
You're right, they, they just happened recently. They, they were submitted recently.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I've sent some in in the past, not that recently, but, uh, but I have sent some in. Um, and then there's the other, the other contact is the banners, uh, some questions about those. So, um, I guess I'll say, I guess we'll all send our comments in again to, to Carla. Is that, what we, what should be the next step? What were you saying, Frank?
Why don't, why don't I take it offline and basically propose where we should be going with it, ask you all for your thoughts?
Right.
And we'll try to go from there and we'll see where we can go with it.
Okay.
Okay.
What's next? Okay. Family Fun Day, so I'm hoping we can get an accounting of that.
Well, I can give you some, uh, numbers. Uh, I can't, I didn't make copies of this because I just got these, but I can at least give you, uh, estimates here of what I have. Uh, there's one or two things that have been fixed on it, but at least you'll have a notion right now, and then I'll get some final stuff over the next few days. Uh, now Melissa's back. Uh, she actually spent, uh, well past four o'clock getting this together, and then I could look at it to see, uh, what might need to be fixed, because it might be misidentified versus swimming under the stars, for instance.
So you'll send us?
Right, but I, I'll give you at least, uh, what I think you're looking for here. Uh, Family Fun Day expenses that were paid for out of money for, from the village per se, is fifteen thousand, six sixty seven ninety seven. Again, this is an estimate and, uh, there might be a couple of things, uh, small things that don't belong in there. But fifteen, six hundred, uh, and change, basically. Um, donations were seventy five hundred dollars. Uh, so the net cost is about eight thousand, one hundred sixty seven dollars. On top of that, uh, there was a rundown of in-kind donations that are not cash, but things like the school supplies, like, uh, pizzas from I Love New York, for instance, and mac and cheese from Route fifty diner, Henry's, the Burke Yard, et cetera, uh, ice cream sandwiches from Hanford, all that kind of stuff. Uh, because to fully understand the cost of event, to understand what was given, and, you know, thanks to those who are in the room that are on this list, I'm just noticing that fact, there's a bunch, uh, that are on this list. It was seven thousand, nine hundred fifty nine dollars and fifty nine cents. So if you add all that together, um, you are looking at about twenty three thousand, six hundred dollars of expenses slash in kinds against seven thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, of donations, plus eight thousand dollars being kind. So net net, the cost of Family Fun Day to the village was eight thousand, one hundred sixty seven ninety seven, basically, uh, despite the expense of about twenty three thousand and change to put it on. So I have to say one thing when I say this. Thank you to the task force, because without their work, yeah, as you know, there was a request for a lot of money from an entity to put this together. They did it for free. And basically, that's why we didn't expend all the villagers' funds ultimately. Also, thanks to our donors, uh, several of them, seventy five hundred dollars worth of donations is incredible. Uh, it just warms my heart to see that, to know what they were able to pull off in a matter of just a few weeks, basically, of knowing they had to basically put it on themselves, and they did a, excuse the expression, a kick-ass job at that for what they did. So thank you to them for that.
Well, thank you very much for that information. I think it's really helpful as we, um, think about planning for next year, uh, what was accomplished this year. I also want to thank all the volunteers, and it was always my contention that we could do this not with, with that, that kind of cost with volunteers. It's always a lot of work, so I'm not saying it's not a lot of work, because it is. Um, but I have confidence that you guys could do it, and, uh, I'm very impressed with seventy five hundred dollar donation number. Does that include Saratoga County's five thousand?
That does not include that, uh, so, uh,
So that's coming in too, to reduce our net expense?
At this point, we may look to just push that into the Whizwell, into the Kelly Park, uh, activities, uh, area. I've got to talk, uh, with, uh, some people, but that thought was being tossed around because obviously the funding isn't where it is. So we, we've got to think about what we want to do with it. Uh, we're just getting some fence prices and whatnot for the activity center over there, so, uh, let's leave that as an open issue that we're discussing actively, see what we were, what we'll do with that five thousand additional.
Okay, so the seventy five hundred was individuals donating?
Yes.
That's, that's really amazing. Uh, so there's a question about sending it to, uh, Hawaii.
Then there's nothing to do with that.
That's different.
Separate.
Oh, that's not the seventy five hundred.
For, yeah, for instance, like I said, my nine hundred dollars that I still technically owe to donate to, uh, events that I promised, I'll, I'm keeping that aside to be that replacement money in case Carla says that, uh, the twenty five hundred dollars or whatever it was that was, uh, gathered from the event can't go because it's village money, quote unquote. We'll make it, we'll figure that out. So that's why I purposely keep the nine hundred dollars to the side right now.
So the seventy five hundred, was that cash donations or like, uh, materials?
Checks.
Checks, cash donations?
Mo- money, actual money is seventy five hundred dollars, in kind was seventy nine, fifty nine, fifty nine, all eight thousand. So a total of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars of either money or in-kind services or goods.
Is there an additional category of like materials that were donated? Right, so you're not counting labor?
Uh, the, services per se, in certain cases, not necessarily labor.
Might be something, some.
Right, right. So volunteer labor, no, for people doing graphics stuff and whatnot, yes.
I attributed, uh, what I look at cost for my income, because I did work for that graphic design, just to give an idea of what it might cost if like, someone didn't volunteer that, so that's, I think that might be the only case.
I think you're right. Uh, yep, school supplies, twice, ice, bottled water, games, prizes, school supplies, graphics, Facebook, school supplies, uh, pizzas, mac and cheese times three, uh, ice cream sandwiches, signage, school supplies, DJ, Whizwell Park, uh, craft supplies.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. I look forward to seeing that report. One, one question, just, um, it, it's not a big question, but, um, I was looking at like the, uh, the, um, transactions, just on the, the, uh, the, the list we get every month.
Yeah, the fund list, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, it looked like, like last year Curtis Lumber, um, we cost us about four hundred, but this time is, it looks closer to two thousand? Does that make sense?
It's because of the.
Do they do a lot more?
Tents, tents, so.
We purchased ten tents.
From Curtis Lumber.
At Weldon River.
All right, I just curious.
Yes.
Okay, great. Great job, thank you very much. I appreciate everything you've done. We all appreciate.
Can I just say one thing? I, my biggest concern, and I think I speak for Mary if you don't mind, um, is that you get comfortable with these figures and you base your contribution to this event based off of these figures, and you have to realize that these aren't etched in stone. We have no guarantee that these figures are going to be replicated next year. So when you're, I know you're looking forward to budget and you're saying to yourself, oh, they only need five thousand, not fifteen thousand. No, we can't, we can't count on this every year. That's a lot of money. We busted our butts to get this money and these donations in kind, but as the economy goes down, you're going to see less of this. So just please keep that in perspective.
Yeah, and, and one point of view also is that if it was eight thousand, fifteen thousand, or whatever ended up being there, then if we don't rebudget for other events this year, essentially falls into fund balance and can be thought of as kind of endowing, endowing types of funds for something like this too. So you, you, nobody's looking to spend the excess on this right now. Uh, maybe there's a thousand dollar event that happens or something like that down the line. Okay, that's not going to expend all that. But the whole notion here is that, you know, when you look at money being saved like that, ultimately figure out what you want to do with it over the next year, kick it back into that type of, uh, activity, and maybe put a few more thousand on top of that, uh, whatever was carried over or up back up to fifteen thousand, but that fifteen thousand will cost you fifteen thousand if you do it that way. So there's different ways to approach it, and so that's, I think, what she's trying to say uh, in that, uh, idea there. So it's something, you know, talking out loud, uh, you're spitballing to you, just things to think about when you're going in that direction.
Yeah, no, I just think it's good. We have a basically a ballpark figure in, you know, of ma- a magnitude of money that I think we all, uh, understand what was needed and also how much in kind was, and volunteer effort was required. You know, we, we heard much larger numbers in the past that I was always very skeptical of being necessary. But this, I'm comfortable with what we did this year. This was a great job everybody did in the, the numbers that were spent.
Well, if Ask had stuck around and taken seven thousand dollars to put on the event, you would hit the thirty thousand dollar number you heard. The difference was at the end of the day, essentially the volunteers stuck up and did seven thousand dollars worth of work that Ask would have taken on most likely in that situation. That's just something to think about too.
Yeah, I mean, there's always in kind. There's, I mean, we can add up the in kind and it's very important and it counts. Uh, but that is just part and parcel of having these events. It's, it's never like, oh, if we didn't have it, it's, it's always gotta be something that happens.
Well, Studio A contract moving on here, uh, is, uh, as you know, uh, just got executed fully and is moving forward, and also have Lobella talking with Jeff over at Studio A to update him on where the sewer situation lays. Uh, there, Lobella's seen a little bit more work, uh, to check on a couple of ideas or options. I don't want to go too much deeper than that. I discussed it briefly with Sean on Friday, uh, the nuts and bolts of it, but more or less, we're getting to a point where we're going to have options on the sewer soon, and, uh, Studio A is being apprised of that situation so that they can figure out where they want to go with it. So that's been over the last couple of business days.
A couple, a week or two, we might have Lobella's.
Uh, I, I, they're varied, so I'd say two to three weeks, because they have to make some adjustments to also the apron uh, in front of, uh, Union Firehouse, a couple of things that, uh, they showed us on the draft there were incorrect or need to be modified, so we can get those to Carla to get, uh, into bid packaging mode for that. Uh, so we're working on that.
And then are they working on the village hall too?
I, when, uh, Ruben was there, uh, last week, I had Jeff show him exactly into putting us back in touch with Lansing Pash, who is going to, uh, put together a proposal to do the work to get us in a position for bid packaging that as well. So we have to get a proposal to get a proposal at the end of the day.
Okay.
For Dave, you can just, uh, keep me in the loop, because I'm, I'm trying to keep him in the loop as well.
Yeah, uh, Chief, uh, Beach Shore is actually there, by the way, for that, uh, discussion, and he, he caught a couple, uh, glitches in what they had. For instance, for those that don't know, the sidewalk that goes past the apron toward Russell's Deli is actually owned by Union Fire Company as an LLC. It's not actually owned by the village. So the question is, you know,
Even though the, the building is the village?
The building is the village, but what's next door is actually a plot of land that's, uh, unions. And also in the back of the picnic area, part of that is Union as well. So when you're looking at what the village's responsibility is, it won't be that tail of the sidewalk over there. Something like that needs to be fixed, and we may still put out a bid with deduction type of approach for that, and they can decide if they want to latch on and do it for that price or go a di- different route with it, but we'll have a couple of different options that way to make sure everything over there gets handled. They want to, uh, invest their money into getting the sidewalk redone. Uh, that goes beyond the apron.
Thank you.
Yep. And new business.
All right. Um, just, uh, I wanted to just talk briefly about foils. Recently, the village has taken steps to improve its foil response. And for those who don't know, uh, briefly, I'll just talk about the foil law for a second. Foil stands for New York State Freedom of Information Law, and I'm going to read from some of the law so that everyone knows what their rights are. In the law's legislative declaration, it states, quote, "The people's right to know the process of governmental decision-making and to review the documents and statistics leading to determinations is basic to our society. Access to such information not be forwarded by shrouding it with the cloak of secrecy or confidentiality," end quote. The law states that within five business days of the receipt of a written request for a record reasonably described, the municipality shall make such record available to the person requesting it, deny the request in writing, or furnish a written acknowledgement of the request and a statement of the approximate date when such request will be granted or denied, and that date shall be reasonable under the circumstances of the request. If after twenty days following the acknowledgements, so twenty five total from when we submitted it, um, the municipalities, if the municipality still fails to provide the record, it must state in writing both the reason for the inability to grant the request within twenty business days and to date certain within a reasonable period when the request will be granted in whole or in part. The Committee on Open Government states that these requirements, quote, "are not intended to permit agencies to wait until the fifth business day following their receipt of a request, and then twenty additional business days to determine rights of access unless it is reasonable to do so based upon the circumstances of their request." Every law must be implemented in a manner that gives reasonable effect to its intent, unquote. They go on, quote, "The Freedom of Information Law states that it is incumbent upon the state and its localities to extend public accountability wherever and whenever feasible," unquote. Therefore, when records are clearly available to the public under the Freedom of Information Law, if they are readily retrievable, they may, it, there may be, I'm sorry, this is a still a quote, "There may be no basis for a delay in disclosure." So as a, as a trustee, I just wanted to share with our community that, uh, we take this seriously. I want to give you an overview of the Freedom of Information Law and our intent to comply with the spirit and intent of this law.
Public comment, five minutes per speaker. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand in the house. This is a good time if you're on Zoom. We would like to speak, so please raise your hand at this point in time. Anybody in the house like to speak for public comment? Seeing no hands in the house, anybody, oh, 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 we have a late hand, we have a, a late participant here, and, uh, Christine? You know the, uh, routine over here. Yeah, just watching stuff around that carpet area. Thank you. And one second, you just gotta get you on. You're all good, and wish, yeah, you'll see a little red thing go on there, you're good.
Christine Fitzpatrick, thirty one Chapman Street. Um, just a couple of things. Thank you very much, uh, for the people who were engaged in Family Fun Day and also for the report. Um, it would be very helpful if instead of giving an oral report with those, with all of those numbers, especially if we're going to be doing this on a forward-going basis, that we had a written report of, of these, the expenditures and, um, just a handout for the public. I think it would be very, um, helpful. Um, it is the usual course of doing things. It would also help when we come forward, when we go forward, uh, for budgeting, and there's a request for this, for the budget, that these numbers came in, uh, writing. Um, the other thing is, um, I wanted to say about your, um, you've mentioned a couple of times this, um, nine hundred dollars that you did not take, Frank, in your raise. And that's good, thank you, we appreciate that. But I don't think, and I, I guess maybe somebody who's smart, who knows more about municipal accounting can tell me, but I don't think you can, I, I would think from my recollection, that any money that you didn't take reverts to the general fund and cannot personally be earmarked for you for something else. Um, you give it up, we appreciate that, but you don't get to then say where that nine hundred dollars goes. I certainly know from working in public service in government that, um, if you were going to donate, for example, sick time or something to somebody for that purpose, you needed a plan, it had to be approved in advance. So I'm just asking, um, I guess it's a question, and while I appreciate it, because it's, it's like this kind of thing, you know, I'm not saying that this is the case, but you can have this nine hundred dollars, it could be spent, you know, three or four times. But I don't think it can be, I, I believe it reverts if you didn't take it to the general fund. So if somebody can, um, explain that to me or correct me if I am wrong, thank you.
I, I don't interrupt you because I know you hate when I interrupt you, but, uh, I think you misunderstood what, uh, happened there. Ultimately, I was kind of quote-unquote forced or budgeted through to take the money. And so I essentially said, I'll take the money that I was getting and double it out of my own pocket. So I'm giving, I'm taking it in pay and then giving it back times two as the nine hundred. So there is actually money going to me and my business, what I do with it from that point. But my, uh, what statement, and I'm sticking by that statement, is I was going to give it toward events. I'm holding back on the event idea because of the whole conundrum that came up about the whole, uh, giving money, uh, toward the Hawaii relief, uh, efforts and whatnot. So in some way, shape or form, I'm just going to go towards some cause related to an event situation, just how we're exactly doing it, we're trying to figure out here because of that, because of Carla, you know, Carla had to be a stickler and, yeah. Because of Carla, you know, Carla had to be a stickler and yeah, sorry Carla.
Get ready because here comes the bus.
Also, Christine, the other part too, I meant to say is I literally got the, the bulk of that report at five o'clock date, but I know Ben wanted to know the numbers. It's the only reason why I went the oral route on it. I would have waited two more weeks and actually put it into nice bells and whistles type thing. But it just wasn't possible to do in the hour I had, so I apologize.
So we can expect?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Gina Marosi, 10th Glory Lane. I'm a little confused here. I'm glad that everybody's so happy about the report on Family Fun Day. But why is the Events Task Force the only one that has to do this? Why is it, why are we being so scrutinized? And no other group, no other committee, no one else that you give money to has to come and do this. I'm very curious as to that. That's a question I would like answered. We worked really hard. And we got a lot of money. And it really is not our job to donate, to get donations for the village. But because of the situation, we felt we needed to work doubly hard. And when I'm talking about donations, I mean the cash. $7,500 that we went out there and under the pavement for, we got it. But as I said, that doesn't mean it's going to happen every year. It's not our job to fund the village. So please keep that in mind. And I really do want to know why we're the only ones that have to be scrutinized so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the house? Uh, I see Ray first and then uh Peter.
Ray out in 16 Middlebrook Avenue.
Middlebrook?
Middle.
Did you move since the last meeting?
I moved from one side to the other. Um, couple of things. Um, I've had a number of, I don't know why I sit on my porch a lot and people come by and they ask me questions. Um, and I get emails uh from folks. Uh, and I've recently got some from uh the folks up in Colonial Hills. Um, and they're, they're wondering about the park committee uh and what plans they've had. Nothing I've heard all summer has had anything to do with the uh Colonial Hills Park. And they're just wondering, is there going to be something done with that? Is there anybody looking at it? Is, has anything come up then that, that could possibly be geared towards Colonial Hills?
Um, why don't you finish your, your comments and I'll respond under board response.
Oh, okay. Very good. Um, next question I had was actually for Sean, but he's not here. Uh, so I'll throw it to you.
I'll do my best, Sean.
You're the fun. Okay. Um, Pope Street or Pope, yeah, Pope Mill Street Storm Drain collapsed this spring. And the residents that live there were curious if anything is, anything is going to be done before winter. So that come spring, uh, we don't have more of a problem than what's there.
Jennifer and I are looking at each other because I would generally hear from her that something like that's going on, not Jeff. And so where is it exactly again?
You don't know where Pope Mill Street is?
I'm thinking here.
I found out today.
I was just going to say, what's?
Okay, good.
I've only been there four years. Um, where, where uh South Street and Maple Avenue come together?
Okay.
There's a little street off to the side. Just before where the guardrail is.
Yep.
The guardrail which gets hit about three or four times a year.
And God's there, huh?
That street, at the end of the street, and I saw pictures today of the storm uh sewer drain that had collapsed this spring. And he, the guy that lives there was asking uh because he said he's had communication a couple of times uh about it, but he hasn't seen anybody looking at it, working on it.
It didn't reach my desk. It didn't reach my email or anything like that. So at this point, I'm going to say, I'm going to ask Jennifer tomorrow morning, first thing to get on it.
I don't know. It's a dangerous situation. I don't, he showed me a picture and said, hey, you're going to the meeting, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I apologize that it's the first I'm hearing about it, but this is what we do when we hear about it. We make sure we are going to take care of it. Pete can uh attest to that because they had a little bit of uh issue uh up in Chesterwood Court out there and we're still making sure we're getting that resolved, but obviously uh it's, it's not uncommon. We just have to make sure we have manpower and ability to uh fix them. And yes, we try to get them done before the winter, as you're suggesting.
Um, the next thing we haven't talked about sidewalks in a little bit. Um, cars parked on the sidewalks. There is a number of spots in the village where there's cars parked every day. And a number of them with a, a very dangerous twist on things. The one that comes to mind every time I go near there is top of Ralph Street Hill and uh Malta Avenue. Every day there's a car parked there. My wife and I have to go out in the road and to get around that to try and, you know, finish our walk or whatever. And it's dangerous as hell. I mean, when you're walking or riding a scooter, um, you know, we try and go and stay on sidewalks as much as we can. Um, we also where a sidewalk ends and there's no more sidewalk up the rest of the street, that's a, a public right of way, right where the grass is. And we try and stay on that. And not only are there cars parked sometimes there, but there's also um vegetation blocking areas on the corner of Chapman and Heritage, I think it is. There's, there's shrubs that are encompassing the whole sidewalk. Um, South Street near Middlebrook, almost across from there, same, same problem.
Wait, have you done the Chapman Drive recently?
I have, I have not done it in the last month.
She, she shaved those back so far.
Terrific. All right.
So check it out again.
That's what needs to happen.
Yeah.
Um, and construction debris. There's, there's a house on Hyde Boulevard, probably three or four in from Eastern or uh East High. There's been a pile of dirt and stone there for the last three months. And it's almost out to the road. So you're forced to go out in the road if you're going that direction. And there's others that are the same way, that they, they aren't parking and things where they should be. So.
So my, my best advice here for you on these situations, we talked at a Ralph Street situation last year and it looked like they had actually cooperated for a period of time with respect to not doing uh the actions you're talking about. Uh, so while it's my pathway to Route 9, I don't always pay attention to see what is over there. Uh, and so when you see it, you know, you see something, say something to Jen. It's what our motto is around here because
I think I have it.
So uh, but that helps us identify and figure out the next steps, be it either police or D W or code enforcement or what have you in those situations. Uh, we hate forced compliance, but sometimes it's necessary.
Again, we talk a lot about safety. So, you know, that's my concern.
Yep, 100%.
Uh, the last thing I had was you talked about Union Firehouse in that one section where the memorial is, is actually their land.
Yep.
Um, they do all the maintenance on that building. They do all the lawn mowing on that building, whether it's, it's the
On that section you're talking about, Lynn?
Not only that, but in the back on the, the picnic area, on the side of the firehouse, and they have a tractor. And that's what they mow with. And they have problems with that tractor. And I don't know if anybody has come to you and said, hey, we need new tractor.
Nope.
And I think it's, I, I would think that would be something that the village would be saying, thank you. Here's, here's a uh, you know, a, a stand-up, you know, ride-on mower or whatever, uh, what do they call the ones with the the hand controls up on the top? Yeah, like I said, um, I can't remember what they're called.
How the hell do you know that?
Uh, I don't know what they're called. They, they need to, you know, talk with, with Beishore and find out if, if the problems they're having with that tractor are just age-related. Uh, it might be something that they saved the village a ton of money by having that them guys mow it. And uh, actually, wit does most of it. Uh, but i- it's just one of those things where the village should be able to take care of that for them and give them a tractor that's good and works right. You know, whatever kind of equipment they need for doing that.
And Chief Beishore, I've been working with Deborah as liaison for uh the fire department. Uh, very closely, I saw her taking diligent notes on that and she's going to check into that. I'm pretty sure if I don't get a chance to first, so we'll see what's going on with that.
And, and they may have fixed it by now, but I know they were having problems with it. And, you know, I sit there and I look and I say, why aren't we giving them what they need?
You see everything on that porch, don't you?
I do, I'll tell you. You know, people, people are there finding it. And I give out more dog visits than you can imagine.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
And Pete, do you change the line? Go right ahead.
Pete Martin, 20 Chesterwood Court. I'm really glad there's not that many people here tonight. Some of the stuff I have to say is going to be uncomfortable and I feel really bad saying it. And my wife talked to me about Tonya Down, which I am doing. Um, we had a ethics meeting tonight. It was open. Nobody showed up. Five minutes, the first five minutes, we talked about, um, how trustee Baskin talked to Danielle Carter and Julie Gay, our committee chair last week. It was hard to believe that you were, and Ben, take it for what you want, what, what I'm saying. I'm just trying to help you. They were upset. All of us were really, really upset the way you talked to him. That's why I was in the back telling you to check yourself. It's not the first time, Ben. You've done it several times here to Carla, who was one of the best attorneys that you can have. They had a call timeout once and then he came back and did it again. I mean, you got to start checking yourself. This is getting to be serious. I don't go to the Wiswell Park meetings anymore because of you. You sat, you wanted to take the money from the boss, business, the Bosses Bar Business Professional Association because they weren't going to order the flowers. That is an organization that, don't shake your head. I can pull it in.
You didn't quite say it, right?
That, well, that is an organization, organization that's been here a long time and they've done a very, very good job and and they're so good. And you, I sat there. We all heard it. You kept saying, if they're not going to order the flowers, I'm going to pull their funding. You said it three times.
I did not say that.
Okay, well, I beg to differ from you because I was there and so was, I wish somebody from the committee was there. But three times I said to you, I would order them for free. And the third time you acknowledged me and you said to me, you can't order the flowers or you shouldn't order the flowers. I don't know exactly what you said. Now, I'm sitting there saying to myself, I can move the dirt, I can plant the flowers, I can try to kill the bishop weeds, but I can't water it? It's because you're not getting your way and you get so upset. Like tonight, your demeanor is completely different. Last week, your demeanor was off, off the wall. Tonight, you're, you're normal. You're fine, in my opinion. There's something not right and I'm going to keep going. The um Revenue Advisory Committee, two weeks ago, we had a meeting. Alex Nelpio is our chairman, really nice guy, new to it. He's trying to do the best that he can. At that meeting, um, Liz Cormos, trustee Cormos came and sat at our table. She sat at our table. She talked through the whole meeting. It's on tape. None of us said anything about it. Now, are you outraged that she did that? Because you're outraged that Bob Bush and Donald Duffy talked at our meeting. And at our Ethics Committee, we were just looking for help. We didn't care who came. We're trying to write something. We're volunteers. We're just trying to do the best we can. Everything that's on paper, and we did it again tonight, we spent another two hours, we all 100% agree on. And we feel that none of you trustees should be changing anything because this is for you. This is governing for you, not for the associates or employees, mostly for you. So you shouldn't be fooling around with it too much and we all feel the same way. So please, you know, when you read it, we all agree 100%. But getting back to the um Revenue Advisory Committee, she sat there and talked through the whole thing. Now, you should be outraged at that. But no one told you about that. She didn't say anything, but that's okay? I mean, that's not right. Then Sean Raymond, I give Sean a lot of credit. He stood up both to both you and Liz. He said that let the Ethics Committee do what they have to do. Four to one vote, you voted against it, which is fine. And then I get an email the next day that some of the members, some of the trustees decided, let's not do it that way. Just correct what you, what Julie talked about. So I'm saying, I asked trustee Vandanza and Mayor Rossi, did you know anything about this? They weren't included in that. So you talk about open meetings. How is that not, how is that right? So the three of you just get together by email and decide to change what you say here? That, you can't have it both ways. You can't scream at our committee and say, we don't have open meetings and you need to do something like that. All this stuff I'm saying to you, I, I'm just really fed up with it. It's not right. You guys are like a dictatorship up here and it's got to change. I'm really looking, no matter who wins election, I don't care. I'm just looking to get changes and people to work together. But you, the way you talk to those two ladies, and I'm telling you, it was talked through the last two weeks through our whole community. Everybody in our community ta- talked about the way you talked to those two ladies last week. You have to start checking yourself.
Pete, about 30 seconds left.
Yep. Chesterwood Court. Um, the, the road's falling apart. I, I know you don't want to hear it. One of the um, people that work for Village said the last time it was paved is 2006. I don't know if you can get that in the books to be done. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. We'll take a look at that for sure. I'll ask Jennifer to assist on that one.
So I guess I'll respond to Peter.
Yeah.
Oh, we're not done yet. All right.
Yeah. Two, right?
You have Keith Lewis, but you also have someone who's on there is Liz, trustee Cormos. Do you want me to loop her in first? Do you want me to keep Lewis first?
Uh, your choice. You're running the controls.
Oh. Let's bring in Keith to talk soon.
And
3085 East Boston Spa. So I want to revisit the conversation uh on ethics uh because I thought Pete Martin did a great job of kind of bringing to light the fact that there is definitely a, a divide, a, a kind of conversation going on. I want to remind you, Mayor Rossi, I hired an outside social media company to monitor and to uh assess your Facebook page because as we know, Facebook is used as a public forum when you use an official page. Now, trustee Baskin doesn't allow comments. Trustee Cormos doesn't allow comments. I'm not sure about Bernadette Vandenees. I, I don't know uh specifically if she's doing the same thing you are. Um, I brought together a number of people. We all brought our laptops. We all brought something to drink and eat and then we opened them up so that we could look at all the different posts. And every different post, if you were not a friend with the person who was making a comment you didn't like, Frank, you were hiding them. So then we videotaped this so that we got it. Now, we have the report from the social media company. I, my question is, Bernadette, are you doing this as well? And uh, is our attorney recommending this? Do we not care about the Constitution? I mean, I, I see Frank, you're interacting with a lot of young people. I have children. I want the people interacting with my children to be upfront and honest. There's a difference between honesty and dishonesty. It's not difficult. It's very easy to understand. I, as a taxpayer, should not have to hire an outside firm to be able to confirm that you're not following the Constitution. You're not allowing for free speech. I don't want to do that for uh trustee Vandenees. I, I would like to hear from you, Frank, why? Why aren't you honoring the Constitution? This is really an important basic step. Now, on foils, you have forced me to go to appeal every single time. You have foiled Boston, Milton, Boston Spa. No one has ever made you go to appeal or your sister go to appeal. You've appealed more than anyone else, but I am forced every single time that I put in. I, I don't understand why I either need to be an attorney or I need to hire an attorney in order to participate in government. This is a responsibility we have to be able to have some oversight, to be able to monitor, to be able to participate. And if you, if you silence, you curate, you welch, you don't allow. There's a big difference. Uh, Pete, I don't, I don't mean to diminish what you've said. I think it's very important that we have these open dialogues. But there's a big difference between breaking the law, breaking the law and being, you know, uh, surly or perhaps not as nice as, as someone should be. When you're dishonest, how can we trust you? And, and trustee Vandenees, if you would answer to me, if you are also doing that, because I didn't monitor yours, I didn't pay someone to go and do it. Um, but I'd like to hear that. I trust you. I would like to hear it from your mouth and also from the attorney. Are you recommending this? Are you telling our trustees and the mayor um that there is a constitution requirement or not? Thank you.
For the record, uh, her name is trustee Vandensa. Please have the respect that we try to get her name right.
Right. I'm gonna bring Liz in now, thinking it's trustee Cormos. And then if it is trustee Cormos, we can do board response at this point.
Well, is there anybody else in the house to, I, you can't just cut off. There's two in the house.
All right. Let me see. I'll make sure it's ones.
Okay. Person named Liz, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry I can't be there in person, but something came up. I'd like to comment on the foil issue. Basically, I've served under one, two, three mayors. And participated, went to village meetings under Mayor Romano. And as far as I can remember, under Mayor Romano, Mayor Wilbright and Mayor Fitzpatrick, foils were responded to in a timely fashion or a letter was sent, given a reason why they couldn't do it or it would be delayed. I also professionally have foiled many, many documents from many different agencies, state agencies. I have never had to appeal. Never. I've always been given explanations. Sometimes it took a little longer for them to find it or they didn't exist or whatever, but I was given explanations. I have still not had my foil that I wrote July eleventh for detailed water data. Now, as a trustee, I should not have to foil for information from the village. That, that's clear in the law. But I did not receive all the information I requested, which I know exists because I got it before. And somehow, it's always been left out. Frankly, that makes me a little suspicious. I'm not saying anybody did anything wrong, but why wouldn't that data be shared? Now, I didn't file an appeal because I, you know, didn't do it, but I'm gonna resubmit that foil. And this time, if it does not get fulfilled, I am gonna appeal. And I'm gonna take it all the way. Because this is not how village government should be run. And I think trustee Baskin has, has suggested that we be given regular updates on who is foiling, who is foiling and, and the response to that. But from what I saw, there was a great deal of prejudice in who got foil information and who did not. Thank you.
Liz, uh, one note. You did receive responses from Bob Kavanaugh with respect to documents that you requested to the extent they existed and were presented to the Revenue Advisory Committee. As such, there was fulfillment for documents in existence at that point in time. If you like to, if you would like to resubmit, you will get the same documents at that point in time. And if you want to appeal at that point, you will, if you want to appeal at that point, we will take that appeal under advisement. Please be aware, however, that because of relationship between you and me and, for instance, a relationship between me and Mr. Lewis, I, as the appeal officer, since all five of us can't do it because of relationships intermingling, I still rely on the attorney at the end of the day to guide. And when the attorney tells me what the proper response is, I pass it on at that point in time. So you can take it to me as much as you'd like. However, I'm doing the appropriate thing, which is keeping my hands off of the foils and the appeals, except to the extent of what my obligation under the law is. So thank you very much. Feel free to resubmit and feel free to appeal that point.
I'd like to correct your statement that I got everything because even Bob Kavanaugh told me that, oh, you want the raw data, the actual reported numbers that people put in those little cards. That was not shared with me and that does exist because that's how they calculate the water rates.
You've been advised by council before as to what is and is not a responsive document under foil. That's all I can tell you. Go back to those emails. Have a good night and please, uh, if something's wrong on your end, I hope everybody's okay.
All right. We got one more, yeah, Lisa, I'm assuming, uh, this is, but I'm not sure, so I'm just.
And whoever Lisa is, go ahead.
Lisa Spideau, one oh six Prospect Street.
It is you.
Yes, it is me. Um, I, I, I'm still here. Um, question that I asked many months ago that it, it still has not been corrected or a part has not come in. The, the fire whistle, still not hearing it at noon and six o'clock, part was ordered. What is the status of that part? What is that specific part? When was it ordered? How much does that part cost? And when will we hear that fire whistle blow at noon and six again?
My understanding is the part situation actually was not gonna rectify it and we need a new one in its entirety. So I'll check back to see where they are on that, Lisa, but they were working in areas to do it and it was not responding properly or was continuously running, which is counterintuitive to what we need over there too. So we were trying to figure out, I think, the best solution ultimately. They're not purposely trying to get rid of it, from my understanding, because it still serves a useful purpose, not just as a clock timing, but also for warning of the situation out there, an emergency. So I will check back with Chief Ashworth, see where we stand on getting the new one in.
Okay, so I appreciate that, but I'm just, I'm, I'm confused why it can, you know, be operational. And, and I understand the reasoning for it. There was a funeral procession and it was operational for that. And, and I do still hear it on occasion for fire calls. So like, I, that's, that's where I'm confused, where I feel like it's working. It's just not working on a scheduled basis. Right, correct.
So I think that, that's a part and parcel of what was going wrong with the entire system. Again, I'll, I will check on it. But my, last time I had asked somebody about it, because you brought it up a couple of times, was if there was a full replacement possibly necessary on it. So let me see if they've changed their mind on that or if they're gonna move forward replacing it in its entirety, okay?
All right, thank you.
You got it.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the house? Otherwise, okay, Ben, board response. I think you want to do some level of it.
Some level. So first of all, and we're talking about, um, what Gina was saying, I, I feel like we do are interested in whenever we're spending village funds on, uh, different entities that we are concerned about how it's spent and how that event is or, or activity is run. Uh, so I wouldn't say it's just about family fund day. Um, you'll see an example of that when we talk about the, uh, motion for the fire department later in this meeting. So it is also true that, um, as the mayor has acknowledged, that the situation with ASCC last year was unusual in terms of the splitting of a village event, but run by ASCC, how that was not a standard process. And so it made sense for us to have more conversation about uh, how that was gonna be run, where the money's going, all that stuff, because it wasn't sort of a regular, uh, situation. So, so I think part of your cause comes from that experience and that is true. We did ask a lot of questions about that. This is more of a standard. Where volunteers are doing things and the village is contributing. Um, I think, understanding that the accounts for that, you know, it's not as if this has to be a heavy lift. Uh, what I was really asking for is just from our internal account, what is the expenses and the revenue for the event, which it should be a routine kind of report. Uh, but I, I do appreciate seeing all the, um, in kind and things like that as well. Uh, that's good information. As far as Colonial Hills Park, I haven't heard much about that recently, uh, in terms of what's going on. I know we ordered some benches.
Yes, is that what we're talking, is that?
Well, that's comes to mind as, as one of the questions.
Victory circle thing?
Yeah.
Yes. The two benches are in.
Okay.
They just have to be put in, which is a D W thing, which, you know, there's a.
Could, could I ask a question about that?
Go ahead.
The installation, the benches that you got, are they recycled? Same, all right.
Are we now all ordering the same?
All right, because I noticed the one in Wiswell Park was just tied off to a, a angle iron or something. Are these benches that are going up there, are they going to be put on slabs and, and bolted down in? Okay. Because otherwise it's.
No more of that other stuff.
All right.
Right. And we determined where that will be bolted in or is that something the park and tree should think about?
Well, probably.
Where up there?
If the park and tree has an opinion, they should share it soon.
You might want to touch base with the residents.
Yeah, right. Just, just to clarify one thing, if I can, just while we got them here. Is there more than just the benches that are being considered or discussed?
That was the whole question.
Okay.
Because the residents wanted to know, uh, what are they gonna do with that? Are they gonna do anything with it? Because, you know, there's been talk about doing different things with it and.
The park in general you're talking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They just, you know, putting a dog park in or there's so many kids and young families up there and if they really want something.
Would you be willing and able to send them Caitlin's contact information?
Sure.
Because then she could actually take it and work with them directly.
They actually have a, a Facebook page that they communicate on.
Like a neighborhood page, a block, a neighborhood page.
All right, thanks. I'm sure Caitlin would, would be happy to talk to them about their ideas. In terms of Peter's comments, I have to say most of your accounts are just inaccurate. And just, I don't know where they, you know, if you're gonna accuse me of something based on something accurate. So here's what happened with water. Based on conversations with Liz and other expert gardeners, it appeared that gardening did not have to happen every, every day. It was budgeted for every day. And so the question was, is there enough funds to extend watering to other sites? Given that perhaps it's over budgeted for its intended purpose? I never said, don't water, withdraw, take the money away. That never happened.
I just agree, Ben. I was there.
Uh, you are wrong. So that's what the conversation was. I remember.
People in here.
I remember it very well and.
We're gonna have an agree to disagree moment here.
That was, that was the conversation.
Go ahead.
That was the conversation. Um, I would never discourage a volunteer from being willing to volunteer. Um, so if you wanted to join with the Wiswell Park or Park and Tree uh, as a volunteer, they're always looking for volunteers and I've never told anyone to not volunteer. Uh, what I might have said and what I still think is true is that we should not rely on volunteers for ongoing needs. So for example, watering is an ongoing need and it should just be done by the village and in a regular way and not rely on volunteers because inevitably it falls down.
Do I answer this next week?
What? No, you don't get to answer. You've had your time.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. Everybody's here. Thank you. First things first. I'm confused by your statement there, Ben, because you just made a statement about in kinds with respect to family fund day that we have to expect that in kinds will be consistent, persistent in that situation. But then you say that we shouldn't be relying on volunteers, which is essentially in kinds are volunteers donations.
Here's a, here's a difference.
Both ways.
Yeah. Family Fun Day is a one day event. The watering is a multiple day per week event. That's what I mean by ongoing. When you have something.
A month long event in terms of organization.
It's a one day event in terms of donations and of course it takes more than one.
You want to take the funding away from the Boston Spa Business Professional Association.
I didn't wanna take it away.
Yes, you, you said it three times.
No, I did not. That is incorrect. That's false.
Again.
No, you are not telling the truth, Peter. I did never said I was going to take money away from BSB Pay. What I said was that the money could be spread out. Yes, all right, whatever.
So, so guys, guys, stop being, stop making things up. Ben, Ben, I'm a point of order now. We're gonna agree to disagree from here at this point forward. If he wants to bring somebody or something in, he's more than welcome to. But in the same way, I've asked you to provide an email that you suggested that the Ethics Committee or Julie had.
There, there was no.
They want, okay.
It was a verbal. All right.
Oh, it was a verbal?
So not, yeah, not from Julie, someone else. I'm not gonna throw them under the bus. Um, but that is, um, now let's talk about the Ethics Committee. So first of all, so the watering piece, you're not even close to being accurate about the, the history. The ethics is, um, first of all, you might almost have a point if we were trying to water down the ethics law, but we're actually very interested in making it stronger than what the Ethics Committee put together. And that is what we are working on. We are strengthening what you did. Secondly, I'm sorry that if you, uh, thought that my tone was inappropriate, but sometimes things have to be said that are disagreeable or challenging. And, uh, and that's maybe uncomfortable for someone who disagrees with what I'm saying. Um, when it comes to the Ethics Committee, um, it should have been said much earlier that it was, and I actually was angry at Frank more than, than Julia, although she's part of it.
It's Julie, not Julia.
I said Julie. That, um, there should, uh, not have been anyone added to that Ethics Committee group to look at the law without, uh, approval and, and even knowledge by the board, by the village board. Because here we are saying the Ethics Committee is going to review law. It wasn't even the Ethics Committee. And that's how you could work in secrecy without open meeting laws um, is because it actually was no group known by law or motion. It was just this Frankenstein group that was created behind our backs without our knowledge and it's completely inappropriate to do that. And so that's, that's what, uh, you were hearing in my voice was, um, that I, I was aggravated about that. But it is, at this point, somewhat old news. So I appreciate you working on it. Um, but, uh, we are going to make the ethics law stronger. It's our responsibility as the legislative body here to, um, make the laws that we think are appropriate for this village. And, uh, that's what we're going to do. Uh, so I'm looking forward. I'm glad you met today. I'm sorry it wasn't later or some other time where more people could meet. But I look forward to, uh, seeing those edits. What, when, how long until we see those edits, do you know? Do you think? So you don't know. So we should ask Julie. All right. Well, ask Julie when we're gonna see those edits. I'm glad you met today. And I look forward to seeing what those were.
Bernard, anything, uh, board response you'd like to say? Uh, first off, and I convey this to Julie actually, but I hope, uh, she was able to convey to everybody on the Ethics Board. Um, and I'm going to use the word board purposely here because obviously there's some confusion over on the left side of, my left side of this table, what's what, who's who. Thank you to the Ethics Board for their work, uh, to look through this. And as I said to her, uh, what impressed me the most is that there was no partisanship with respect to the desire to help the village with this task and especially this go around too. This is all volunteer work at the end of the day, volunteer. And they're providing a service that none of us are gonna be able to provide very easily because of the politicalization of everything, apparently. And, uh, you know, to take time out of everybody's day again for hours to do it is really, really awe inspiring to me and I appreciate that work. So thank you to them.
Frank, just one quick.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Was everything we wrote down, one hundred percent all of us agreed. We're okay with Carla making any changes she feels fit because this is supposed to be governing the trustees. We're very comfortable with what you like to do. Um, that's where I'm gonna leave it at. So anything you'd like to change is fine. We're good with that.
Um, with respect to what happened last year, I, we were talking out loud in meetings about uh, creating a mayor's advisory committee on ethics that, yes, was gonna allow them to do their work that they needed to do without having to do formalized public meetings. So it's the whole thing. And then it would be the product basically public and shown and any corrections were made by Carla back then, if I remember correctly. So essentially they gave the basis of a body of work over to the village attorney to look at, to make sure we comported with law. Uh, or, you know, what is legally allowed and some edits were made based on some questions or, uh, issues. And then you know the rest of the story, I think, as far as the amount of blue and red edits that went through the whole thing. It is what it is, but I take huge issue with the idea that we did something behind the board's back, yada, yada, yada. It was discussed in open meeting what was going to happen. And I, I just don't get where you get this notion of telling Pete, he's a liar or whatever. And then you sit here and act like I'm lying about something or hiding something. It's just not right. It's not appropriate. And the fact that you just stated to us that actually Julie didn't write an email, even though you kind of pounded on the table about this whole thing two weeks ago, you just said that you were wrong about that. Would you apologize to her at least, please, publicly? Because that was pretty daunting.
I was, I never said, oh, maybe, there's definitely an email. I said, I'll check my, I said, I'll check my emails.
Go to the tape.
But it is, yeah, go to the tape. That's great. But yes, I was told that, but it doesn't even matter because it's back to the committee. But no, you did not tell us.
So you're not gonna apologize for it?
No, my memory is, is what it is.
Can I get a motion?
Wait, I'm not done responding to you, Frank.
Well.
Um, we definitely did not know that you had added two people to the.
Yes, you did. No, we did not. No, we did not. It was always, nope. Really? Go back to the tapes. Go back to YouTube, Ben. In fact, ask Keith and Liz because they've gone through all of them. They probably have the notes on.
I was told by an Ethics Committee member a few weeks after that, oh, by the way, so and so's on the committee. Oh, really? That's a surprise.
And if you asked at that point if you had confusion about it, and nobody was hiding the fact.
They were already, you had already done it. It was done. They had started meeting with two people we had never known about and never approved. And as a result of your actions, we get our council to tell us, oh, well, it's not actually the Ethics Board this meeting, so they don't need open meeting.
You realize that Julie actually was the person that selected people in addition to the Ethics Committee.
Very surprised if you weren't involved.
I was not. In fact, she came in, she, she came in to meet with me about how to move forward, and I said, it's all you, Julie. At the end of the day, you do it how you feel is appropriate.
Those two of you just, just showed up. You had nothing to do with it.
I had nothing to do with it, Ben.
That's surprising.
Yeah. Can I get a motion that Jessica Clemens be removed from the roles of Eagle Matt Lee Fire Company Number One in the Boston Spot Fire Department? Trustee Fandesa.
I'll second it.
Trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I get a motion that the following contracts be approved and the mayor authorized and directed to execute same. Brooks Island Museum, $2,500. National Battle Museum, $3,000. Friends of the Cataracts, $1,000. Boston Spot, or Boston Elks Club, in-kind plowing. Boston Area Senior Citizens, $12,000. Boston Area Community Center, $15,000. Boston American Legion, in-kind plowing. Boston Area Recreation Commission, $12,100. Trustee Fandesa?
I'll second it.
Trustee Baskin, discussion. There are more, yes, Ben, to answer your question from earlier. So if you have others that you believe that are missing from this, we'll add them into the next one. This is done because when the election was moved and the official year was moved, the folks that were doing that forgot that there were a bunch of other things that had to go with it. And so the question ultimately became, do we move this process to January 1st with the new official year? Or do we move it to where the budgeting occurs June 1st when money is released? And the correct answer from what Carl and I were looking at on this one was June 1st because you know what the money is at that point in time. So why would we have to wait till January 1st?
It's always been the case, yeah. I was surprised. It's like five months old, but are overdue, but I'm glad it's happening now. And in terms of the others, so there's Captain, and what else?
Just get a, get a list together and hand over to Carla and we'll get them done. We went back to the organizational meeting list, so that's where these came from in the first place, from last year. And there were, there were other ones, but we just couldn't chase them down in time.
All right.
Liz has her hand up. Do you want me to give her permission to talk in case she wants to have a say about one of our motions?
She can't vote.
She might have information?
Well, in the meantime, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
It's all right. And the contracts are the ones that Carla, you filled in the amounts.
Well, she templated them so that we can fill them in or have her retype them. So yes, that's why the list is there to make sure we had everything right. I get a motion to engage Joe Johnson Equipment to perform installation of an auto line reel and pinch roller of that back truck for the amount of $9,057.57 with funds being allocated from the appropriate DPW line, budget line. The board further approves usage of general fund, fund balance should the proper budget line not have sufficient funds now or in the future up to the $9,057.57 amount. Trustee Fandesa?
I'll second it.
Trustee Baskin, discussion.
So we have four motions for DPW. Do we, do we have a sense? I asked earlier if we knew how much money is in there appropriate for this?
I emailed you last night, and you acknowledged it. So with respect to.
No.
Give me an answer. With respect to the back truck parts, $10,500 is budgeted for the root cutter and the reel. So we're slightly over on that. That's just the, you know, things going up in price, most likely being the cost there. With respect to $15,000 worth of repairs, or two different types of repairs, the answer is we have a lot of repair categories, and we're gonna parse out these repairs into different lines or different pieces of DPW oversight lines. And so we can't tell what it's gonna do to any one line, and this is where budget transfers come in eventually. But in the case of where budget transfers wouldn't be sufficient, we're trying to make sure that we are covering ourselves here at all angles. And I had a call with Sean on Friday to help him understand why we went to this wording, just as a kind of a safety net. Because again, we don't know for sure what the long-term effect will be for the budget year. We just know that we have $15,000 repairs that weren't expected that while there's some repair dollars in some of these lines, we don't know there'll be enough ultimately to sustain for the year just in the budget lines. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, do you have a sense that most of this is gonna be covered by?
I would say there is a portion, yes. But again, if another truck goes tomorrow.
No, but these, these four mostly are covered, or are they mostly going to?
Again, the two related to back truck, we had $10,500 allocated for that in a line. That is absolutely in a line. So we're 2,000-ish over, I think. Is that what it comes to? Uh, yeah, 38 and so, yeah, you're $3,300 over on that because of costs. So that will probably be a transfer ultimately that'll happen for the time being, not involving the fund balance. We can avoid it. But again, that might lead to a fund balance tap.
No, I saw that all four are.
But these are all different lines, Ben.
Right. But you think they're, you think they're different lines are, there's money in those lines?
There is $10,500 in a line related specifically to back truck.
Right, right, right. But the other, there's four, three other things.
Two.
One, two.
I haven't before, two are back truck.
Yes.
Two are back truck.
And the other two are one truck's brakes and one truck's axle, same truck, but different stuff. It's been car stops, but two different processes.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Unanimously, let me say. I get a motion to engage HL Gage Sales Incorporated to perform brake repairs on the tandem dump truck for the amount of $12,102.80. The funds being allocated from the appropriate DPW budget line. The board further approves usage of the general fund, fund balance should the proper budget line not have sufficient funds now or in the future up to the $12,102.80 amount. Trustee Fandesa?
I'll second it.
Trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I get a motion to engage HL Gage Sales Incorporated to perform axle repairs on the tandem dump truck for the amount of $3,170.86. The funds being allocated from the appropriate DPW budget line. The board further approves usage of general fund, fund balance should the proper budget line not have sufficient funds now or in the future up to the $3,170.86 amount.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin. Trustee Fandesa, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You, you could probably stay in your sleep after this previous street, but here we go. I get a motion, purchase a root cutter nozzle for the back truck for the price of $3,800 with funds being allocated from the appropriate DPW budget line. The board further approves the usage of general fund, fund balance should the proper budget line not have sufficient funds now or in the future up to the $3,800 amount. Trustee Fandesa? Trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I get a motion to authorize the Boston Spot Fire Department to expend up to $12,500 for the renovation of the Eagle Matt Lee Fire Company Number One Firehouse Bathroom. After May 31st, 2023, $10,000 for this renovation project was moved to the general fund, fund balance. The board approves that $12,500 to be utilized from general fund, fund balance. Trustee Fandesa?
This, this one I have questions on.
I'll second it. Discussion.
All right. So I was, I was talking to Sean earlier today.
I spoke to him Friday about this, yeah.
Yeah, and so there's some information that I think will be helpful for us to have before approving this. So for example, people didn't know that, what the plan was. So the plan is to create a storage space in addition to a.
A mop bathroom, a mop closet.
No, it sounds like it's more than that. It's more than that. It's, they're storing things. It's not just, so anyway, that kind of detail that we're still not sure on. It would be good to get that in writing, what the actual plan is for this. And then I know, I appreciate Stephen coming up with a budget very quickly off the top of his head today. But it would be good to get a confirmed budget. One thing Sean was asking for is the, the split out, if at all possible, the budget for the storage space and the store, and the budget for the bathroom.
You said to Steve Zlatnik, thanks, Stephen, I assume the mop sink is for storage area, not the bathroom. We need a plumber. His response was, I second, guess these things thread endlessly. Uh, here we go. Yes, the mop sink is for the storage room slash mop room, and no, we don't need a plumber. We have many members who can complete the task. Thank you, though.
So it's more than a mop area. It is a storage area.
You called it a storage room mop room. It's probably a hole in the wall is what I'm saying.
It's more than that. There, there are two bathrooms in it. One, both of them are decent size, and I'm assuming they're gonna use the smaller one to turn into storage, and it will be more than a mop room. And they need it for, I mean, as explained to me, they're gonna put some piece of equipment. It sounds like there's a bunch of stuff that needs to go in that room. So it's not just a mop closet. But that's what we should know before expending money is what are we expending it on? And also a better sense of what it costs. So Sean's request, for example, was a budget for the storage room and a separate one for the, for the bathroom. And.
So on Tuesday of last week, the last paragraph of Steve Zlatnik's email was, as I said, we just wanted to make sure the money was still there so we can start in the next week or so. Parts and supplies need to be ordered, and not knowing lag time on some items, the sooner we can move, the better. Thanks for your time. We look forward to hearing from you so we can, so we move forward. That was last Tuesday. Six days later. Where are we here?
So there's, there's no rush clearly on this project. It's been a year and a half since they asked for the money. And so that's the request is that we get a better description of what's gonna happen and also a more detailed budget. There are a lot of things said at the, a year ago that weren't, weren't entirely came, came to be in terms of, we were just talking about a bathroom. Now there's a storage. Also, at the time, they said it would be purely volunteer labor, but apparently they had to find a contractor, try to find a contractor. Maybe that's gonna be true again. Maybe part of the budget they should.
Ben, you just, you did the Spanish Inquisition on this man for the last 24 hours about this topic. And you're, I don't even know where you're coming from at this point. So at this point, I'm just gonna ask for a roll call, though.
What I'm, where I'm coming from is for appropriate.
Vote's been called.
Fiscal management.
Vote's my call. We're going nowhere fast.
Baskin? We need to know what we're paying for and also.
Yes. Mayor Rossi.
Yes.
Let's say no, and now I'm gonna explain my no vote as, as people do.
And if I could just.
Yeah.
As a point of procedure, because there's only three of you here that can vote, the motion fails because it has to be a majority of the fully complemented board.
Right. Actually, I'd like to abstain for now if possible.
It's still a no vote.
Right, but it's not like I don't want to vote for this eventually. I do want to support it. I just feel like to do due diligence. And our responsibility, we should have a, everyone should have a clear understanding of what is gonna be done and a good budget for this. And that's not yet really been provided, so. So I'm hopeful by next meeting that can be provided and we will vote for this.
And so it was no, Brandon, you were yes. I was yes, just as a point of information. Again, the request was made on Tuesday of last week, and we're sitting here micromanaging the situation still following Monday, which I think is ridiculous when $10,000 is sitting in fund balance that was dedicated to this project in the first place. The only question was a cost overrun possibly up to $2,500. And I discussed this with Sean on Friday, and he was in full agreement that, hey, it happens. I would like them to be, you know, I would like them to disclose with respect to, you know, where it's going or to break down the costs as you're doing it. So we have a better idea of what happens and to try to stay at 10,000 if they can. That was the conversation on Friday. And so that's why my vote is yes, and it fails. Two to one with respect to an abstention being a no vote.
And I guess.
Two to zero to one, but it's a, it's a failure because.
You go to no originally, so that was both your points.
That's fine.
He can change that. He can change it open. I.
I'd rather just table this. It's, I don't, it's too late for tabling.
Too late for that. What, what is your vote? I, I.
Can we make a motion to table?
No. We, what is your vote? I'm giving you the opportunity to make sure your vote is recorded correctly.
I'm gonna abstain until I get.
Okay, so it is two to zero to one. The abstention is gonna be considered two to one for the purpose of vote count. As such, it needs three votes. It fails.
So again, one reason I am hoping to revisit this in two weeks is our history with this, which was we were told this would be volunteer labor and that would be for a bathroom. Things have changed. And so it would be.
Still volunteer labor. Ben, he doesn't need a plumber. I just read it to you. I get a motion authorizing DPW to hire Darshan Williams as a full-time laborer affecting 9/27/2023 at the hourly rate of $18 per hour.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandesa?
I'll second. Where is this motion?
Trustee Baskin H. This was, you took the first one, and about 10 minutes later, we reissued it because we caught the fact that we had left this one out by accident. Uh, this is to replace a laborer who had left a number of months ago. And so this is not adding to the roster. It's just re-fulfilling the roster for those wondering. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Other business? Liz has her hand up. I guess at this point it might be appropriate. Liz, anything to add?
Yep. I just want to clarify that I still don't know who was on that Ethics Committee. I really don't. I've heard Bob Bush's name. I, I've got no information.
Pete, who's on the Ethics Committee?
Excuse me, I'm speaking.
Yeah, well, we're gonna get you an answer real quick so that you, we get you the.
Well, the thing is, and also, I appreciate.
Or you don't want to know it.
And the Ethics Committee's work, but she does not have authority to expand the committee. That's only a board authority.
It was, let's go back and watch the video. So it was a Mayor's Advisory Committee on Ethics, okay? And what we did was essentially give them the ability to do the work without open meetings law conflicting with it and gave them the opportunity if they wanted to, to expand it to get other ideas out there. Julie selected who she put on, and she did. If you had any questions at that point in time, Julie was not gonna hide it from you. She's been very open about it.
That just reinforces why we shouldn't just take what they put together and pass it as law.
We advocate. Were you so afraid, though, to allow volunteers in your community to have that? Right, I don't know, but Pete, who is on the committee?
Volunteers are wonderful. They provide their knowledge, their talents, but they are not elected officials. We are.
Exactly. We are elected officials, and it's about us, the Ethics Committee. Well, I'm sorry.
We make the final decisions based on a representative democracy.
Anyway, Peter, would you please let us know who was on the committee again?
Donna Thuppi, Bob Bush, and everybody else that's on the committee.
The Ethics Board.
Now, the one we did tonight was only committee members.
Ethics Board members.
Board members, I'm sorry. Went from, from the first page to the last page. We were very thorough. We've been working on it all weekend. And we would just like Carla's input going forward. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, and I asked Julie to do track changes so we can all see what the changes were. Thank you. And for the record, we would never, and we did not ever agree to a mayor's task force to look at the ethics law. That would never have happened, and it didn't happen. We agreed to Ethics Board.
You don't agree to it. It's a mayor's advisory committee, and we basically.
So you're agreeing, you, you just admit you did it unilaterally, unilaterally without our knowledge.
Ben?
That's what you did.
Ben, it was all in the open what the process was.
It wasn't. And we never agreed with it, and we never knew what happened.
I will bring you to YouTube. You bring me that email that still exists. Liz, anything else on your end?
No.
Thank you. No executive session necessary. Can I get a motion to the vouchers be audited? The meeting be adjourned at 8:48 PM?
I'll make the motion.
All right, we'll give it to Trustee Baskin, Trustee Fandesa on the second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Everybody have a good night. See you in October. October 10th, folks. October 10th is Columbus Day. It's not our next meeting. It's October 10th.
I can't believe you guys are slowing down. My big cap. Brett, you said you. Big cap, 10 times.
If you saw the emails back and forth, you'd understand where that was going.